...hate speech, it is protected speech. I can prove that BLM is a hate group. There's a video containing one dead cops, one dead cop. Pissed up shit. Shot in the chin in New York City, one dead cops. Two police officers were shot in the back of the head in their patrol car. Sadly, no evidence was shown to be directly linked to the shots or inciting violence and hateful. Those occupants are protected speech. And worse than Mr. Sheldon saying, quote, "BLM is a hate group, plain and simple." I understand you are getting multiple foreign hateful emails demanding the firing of Chief Sheldon. They aren't even Alaskans. I'm an Alaskan and represent this community. And I'm admitting that this administration, the administration, the end of it. And a public apology given to the chief of police is in order.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Hi. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mickey Wallner. I've lived in Palmer for 38 years, raised all my kids here, and I love Palmer. I think we have the best town in the state, and I have a lot of Palmer pride. I was very distressed, of course, about Chief Sheldon. This man has served our town for 19 years. And there's never been complaints of racism, brutality, anything against him, nothing. He's been an exemplary officer. And to take some comments from previous years on a private Facebook page and try to make them into something is wrong. And it's not fair to him. He justified some of those statements by saying, "That's just my opinion, y'all can have your own." But when it comes to Black Lives Matter being a hate group, that's a popular position taken by a lot of people. Because Black Lives Matter is both sides of the coin, it's peaceful and it's violent. And the peaceful part draws people in. The violent part is the other side of the coin. When you constantly have marches and protests that end up in violence later on in the night, and I'm not talking just about now, I'm talking about 2013, I mean, it could go on and on. They're a hate group, they're intolerant and hateful, intolerant. We had a peaceful march here, didn't we? Until one person dared wear a shirt that says "All Lives Matter." She got punched out by a protester. That's intolerant, that's hate. So for him to say they're a hate group, I have a problem with that. You know, if he were to take any of his views and act on them whenever he's at work, I would say absolutely we have a problem. But you know, whenever he talks about gender, boy or girl, well, you know, that's on the driver's license. I've never heard anybody on the radio going, "The suspect is five foot nine, female, trans man." You know, I mean, there's 58 gender identities. When you're a police officer, there's a male or female, and usually it's what's on your, you know, your driver's license. I don't see a problem with him identifying him with male and female. Doesn't mean he has to treat somebody wrong when he's on the job, but that's what we identify with, that's how we run our society. The last thing I want to say is, you know, I love Palmer, I raised my kids here until they grew up and flew too. And part of what makes Palmer great is people like Dwayne Sheldon. For the last 19 years, he's contributed to making this a town I want to live in, I want to stay in. So all I can say is that, thanks for listening, and please, please, put him back on the job. He's a good man, he doesn't deserve this. Thank you.
Mike, the mic, turn the mic on, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leonard Wallner, and that was my wife. Let everybody know. I am proud to call Palmer my home since 1970, okay? I am a retired Alaska State Trooper, okay? I retired in 2016, 25 years on the force. And half that career I worked right here in Palmer, okay? Right over here, South Valley Way, and I worked hand in hand. I was even reserved with the Palmer Police Department way back when, before I became a trooper. But I've been working side by side with the officers over there to include Dwayne Sheldon, okay? I have nothing but the highest respect for him, he's a good officer. He doesn't have a racist bone in his body, you know? He's fair, he treats everyone equitably, you know? And I'm speaking from firsthand experience, because, you know, we've worked side by side, you know? And experience goes a long way in determining a person's character. And I, so I'm just here, I don't have a canned speech to throw out at you guys or anything. I'm just here to voice my support for a good man. And to say that, you know, I mean, this is America, you know? I mean, Dwayne certainly is, you know, an American, and he loves his country, he loves his city, he loves his community, you know? And I mean, he's served it with pride all these years, and, you know, to treat him this way is, I don't know, in my opinion, that's a tragic disservice, you know? And again, you know, I know that each one of you and the council members who are listening, I'm sure you have opinions about things too, that maybe someone else may not like, okay? You know, we all do, you know? But we speak our piece, okay? Sometimes maybe social media isn't the best way to do it, okay? And then you gotta look at the track record, okay? And as it's a week, a day, 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 week, we're talking about something from about two, three years ago, for Pete's sakes, you know, okay? So, I don't know, maybe it shouldn't have been said, but, you know, I sit here and think to myself, BLM, I don't know that we either went with BLM, but, you know, okay, God forbid I get shot and killed. I mean, would BLM have a protest for me? What, because I'm a wrong skin color? You know, that probably wouldn't happen, you know, so. Again, I just want to reiterate, you know, that, you know, for the amount of time I've worked with Dwayne, I know Dwayne, Chief Sheldon, you know, that, you know, and all the time we put him together on cases and working things, and, you know, I mean, he's a reputable person. And even folks in the council here, I, you know, I lived down the street from the Berbeks way back when on North Valley Way, and Nathan Combs was on my Little League team here in Palmer. Oh, anyway, it's a personal connection. I just want to speak my piece and say that, and I hope the council decides. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard.
My name is John Robert Green, I'm from Wasilla, Alaska. I lived here in the city of Palmer when I first came to Alaska in 1991. And I'm here to speak for the First Amendment and everyone in this room and everyone in the United States of America. The First Amendment is primarily a restriction on Congress and their interference in our rights to religion and free speech. But it also reinforces our rights to religion and free speech. And that right belongs to everyone with their feet in the United States, not just citizens. And that's all I have to say, except that anyone who tramples on the First Amendment is an embarrassment to our founders, they're an embarrassment to their family, and they're an embarrassment to their neighbors. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
I, my name is Dave Norton. I moved to Palmer here in 1977, I raised my family here. It's my preferred place in all the United States to be. I wanted to tell you that I've known Dwayne Sheldon for decades, I've worked with him, I had his boys and scouts. He's had my boys there, I've been on camping trips with him, I've seen him in work, I knew him when he was undercover, you know, narcotics, wearing a grated little beard. And never once was there ever a racial slur, racial epithet, or anything that would disparage any person. Okay, he doesn't have a racist bone in his body, I don't either. But I am adamantly in support of the First Amendment. And Dwayne Sheldon's right to it, and my right to it, and Black Lives Matter's right to it. Do I agree with their methods and their statistics, so-called? No, I don't. But I'll defend their right to express them, just as I'll defend Dwayne's right to have his opinion. And we only need the First Amendment when those rights are threatened. If everybody agrees on everything, there's no need for it. But our founding fathers were wise enough to put these in here, these amendments securing our God-given rights, to protect them when they are challenged. And that's what's in front of you right now. There'll be social pressure against you, there'll be people that have agendas, there'll be institutions and organizations trying to pressure certain behaviors. But those behaviors are what the First Amendment was designed to protect us from being compelled or forced into. Dwayne has a right to his opinions. It's his conduct on the job that governs whether he should be chief of police, not a post that was made two years ago. And I have never heard anyone complain of Dwayne's conduct on the job. Please get him back to work. I live in Equestria Acres, you know, the troopers cover us, but Palmer backs them up. I've had people walk in my front door and announce themselves because they were to burglarize us. Fortunately, I was home. He's a good man, we need the First Amendment, we need all of the Constitution to be backed up. And that means we have to have some spine and do it, even when other people will call us names for doing it. And we have to defend those name callers' rights to express themselves. Their statistics don't comport with the facts. If there are any, you want to call that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Zane Norton, that was my father in here just a moment ago. I've been living in Palmer since I was born. I've never once heard of or come across a case of racism with the police in Palmer, nor heard of one. Now, I wasn't there at the march the other day, because I was busy working. But from what I've been able to gather from the events that took place, it seems to me that entities largely from outside of Palmer or even Alaska decided to strike at what has been a largely peaceful town to try and stir things up in a political manner. They have the right to express themselves peacefully in whatever manner they deem fit. However, at the end of the day, it is the opinions of the constituents of those elected officials in Palmer that ought to be listened to above those from any other location in the United States. The First Amendment that protects our right to express and believe what we will protects a principle that is basic to the foundation of our nation, to the integrity of a representative republic. It's essential that local communities be able to, on the individual and group level, have whatever opinion they want to. And as elected officials of those local communities, you're beholden to those constituents, not people from other states or other cities. And at the end of the day, that's what needs to be taken into account when considering whether or not public opinion should determine if a man keeps his job, which frankly, it shouldn't. Public opinion may be taken into account when determining laws or whether or not one event or another is justified. But at the end of the day, what should determine if a man keeps his job is how well he performs his job. And from what I've been able to gather, he's done an exceptional job. So, I'd like to voice my support for him getting back on the job and echo my father's previous statements, as well as the statements of many of those here today. And I've yet to see anyone here today who does not support him keeping his job.
Thank you.
Do you want a clean next to dry?
Yes, please. By the way, that was the color, not mine. My name is Beth Reed, I'm a resident of the Greater Palmer Area. I, the first time I saw the post, I thought, wow. Somebody went back two years through this man's Facebook page to find something to go ahead and defame him using it. It was amazing to me. Have you ever tried to find something two years ago? That person deliberately read every post until they found something to defame the chief of police with. That was a deliberate act. Defamation is the maligning, the public maligning of somebody's character. And yes, it's definitely any kind of punishment for that person who has posted that and then is shoved out the door for a while because they don't like what he said. That's really a First Amendment break. The people on this council have broken away from, or the manager, have broken away from the First Amendment. You have all kinds of rumors flying around out here, all kinds of, "A militia was in Palmer? I didn't see a gun." How was a militia in Palmer? There is no militia, I've never heard of a militia in the Matsu borough. I have heard about people training, but I don't think they were militia. The other thing I was curious about was the timing. The Palmer, downtown Palmer officials and businessmen and citizens were concerned by what they had seen on television over these kinds of protests. What I want to know is, how did they get rid of the chief while the town is planning to deal with a protest at the end of that week? I think there was some methodology here. I think that what I've read about other cities where police are being stripped of their authority or put on suspension or whatever because of their opinions, and these are generally police in leadership roles, and they are being defamed, and everyone gets up in an uproar about them being a person, it doesn't make sense to me. I think that this was very well planned and executed, and you have supported it as a council.
Thanks, Phil.
Mrs. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be with you. My name's David Miller, I am a citizen of this greater Matsu Valley area. I do a lot in Palmer, and I'm very involved in our community in the sense that I just love doing good things. I enjoyed the conversation that we had the other day. I really appreciate the responsiveness that you had to a phone call that I had once I was alerted to this apparent concern regarding Chief Sheldon. I'm here to talk straight for a couple of minutes about the importance of having solid, good public citizens in all capacities. And I want to speak specifically about how important it is to protect and stand up for those who epitomize good public service. And I can tell you right now that in my interaction with Chief Sheldon, he is the epitome of a solid, good public servant, and I'm grateful for that kind of a person. I have the good fortune to be able to hire his son to come work for me and my company, which is part of the reason that I got to know the Sheldons. So I can tell you from a personal perspective that they're amazing people, and they do have, in all aspects of their lives, consistent, solid core beliefs of respect for rights for all people. I have not been one to chase down the, all of the stories being told, all of the issues that are being brought up. But this one, I will say, is that I do know that there's an agenda when these kind of things are brought forward to attack somebody. I don't know where the agenda's coming from, I'm very concerned about those kind of agendas. I think it's very important that we all, as citizens, be very alert to and concerned about anytime groups come together to defame or to infiltrate good communities. We need to be better than that. Chief Sheldon deserves better than this. And I mean it. I am very grateful that, when I had the chance to talk to you, Mrs. Mayor, that you were so responsive. And that is the, that, again, you know, there's going to be different opinions. But my interaction with you, I am very grateful for that.
Thank you.
And I'm going to tell anybody else that's in this room that the value of public service cannot be underrated. And I hope that each one of you recognize that anytime that this kind of stuff gets traction, you know, just think about how that would be if it was ignored in your situation. And I hope that a bunch of people show up to defend you and your good name. I just want to leave my comments, to be clear, that Chief Sheldon absolutely always needs to be put in the proper respect for what he does, and I'll close with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be standing, I got a bum leg, I don't always sit in the best one, harder chairs. I speak loud enough.
You do. And it looks like, as you're standing, we're good for the council members who are on.
Outstanding. My name is LD Howard. I'm actually 907 Freedom. I'm here to defend the mayor and her leadership. For all the rumors, all the stuff going about what happened, 907 Freedom is one man, me, on Facebook page, that does nothing more than disseminate information. I try to protect and defend the Constitution, and that's why we chose to also be there to protect and defend the rights of Black Lives Matter and the young lady and young men who threw this forward. I have plenty of experience, because most people know, I've only been here for three and a half, almost four years. I moved from Oregon, I saw what some of these groups can do to a community. They come in, they fracture, they cause fissures, they pit neighbor against neighbor. I love Alaska, this is my home, I came up here for freedom, I came up here to fall in love with life again after a traumatic injury I went through about nine years ago. My family's here, my children go to school here, I run a business in the valley, I have a political organization and now I'm running for office. Not that I was planning on, but I feel the need to do so. A few of these statements that have been made. One, the man did not contact me and ask to hire me. I told the mayor, I saw a Beric on both sides of the aisle. Things were being said that were horrible and inflammatory, and I was worried about the safety of our community. I talked about people hurting each other, even killing each other. So I called the mayor up and I said, "Mayor, I have a group of people, I have a voice," not even a group of people, "I have a voice in many sectors of Alaska, and we're afraid, we're afraid that the radical terrorists and provocateurs and instigators are going to come in and take away the message." These young people have the courage to stand up and say. The courage is important, that these young folks have this in their heart and are willing to stand up and do something about it. So I said, "Mayor, I have a bunch of people who come when I call and understand we're for freedom. Do you mind if we come and go ahead and make sure things stay peaceful? I'm telling people to leave their heavy guns at home, we don't need bomb armor, we don't need to take into the fear we see in the lower 48s." The mayor said, "LD, that would be nice, thank you." And the rumors got started, and people wanted to defame me and call me names and say horrible things that I was a red cop and everything like that. I don't understand, you know, where his leadership was. I saw, I said, "There, there, I saw there, there's a leader." You know, other actions, actually, the city manager asked me that, "Why would I call the mayor when he's police?" Why would I say something, comment about something, and then, you know, ask him if he saw the video? He said, "No." So rumors are being spread, but no one's looking for the truth. Everyone's running around in fear, trying to put out fires that weren't there. I called the mayor for her leadership, and I stand 100%, 100% behind Chief Sheldon's right to the First Amendment. Samuel Sussman said, "If the wheels of justice and the Constitution do not apply well, they apply none." And that's something we all pray in poor lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not as tall as he is. I'll sit. Well, first of all, thank the council for letting me come here to speak to you guys today, I appreciate it. My name is Donna Anthony, I am retired police officer for the city of Palmer. I was the only female with a city Palmer for many, many years. I want you to know I met Dwayne Sheldon back in 2003. I've had the honor and privilege to work with Dwayne Sheldon as a patrol officer and undercover in the drug unit. Over the years, I have never questioned his character. This man is dedicated to his community and to his youth. And what you guys have done... And what you guys have done is unbelievable to this man. I have never seen Dwayne Sheldon treat anybody in the public disrespectfully or unfairly. As officers, we respond to calls with different races, cultures, and LGBT within this community. It has never been an issue. Not once have I seen him treat anyone unfairly on a call. I need you to understand that. Not once have I seen Dwayne Sheldon violate somebody's constitutional rights. Here you are violating his right now. We're not here because he exercised and used use of force. We're here because he exercises First Amendment two years ago in reference to BLM. I ask you to do your fact checking. Look at BLM. As a retired officer, I can tell you that BLM was known to do his on law enforcement. I don't know what it is now. Sounds like there might be more, but you guys need to do some factual check as he's not telling you something that's not true. We all know Dwayne Sheldon is a good family man and he goes to church. Many people in this community have spoke about Dwayne Sheldon and his character. So I'm not going to go into all that. I'm going to go in and I'm going to skip into one example. You have many parents who have children who are LGBT. With some parents, they strongly believe in their religion, but this does not mean they do not love their children. They can still be parents, have their religion, and love their children. With Dwayne Sheldon, he has his religion, but he comes to work and he loves everybody in this community. There's a balance between religion, freedom of speech, and doing a good job. And he does. Dwayne Sheldon has given over 19 years of service in this community, right here, to us. Trust me, I would know if there was any discrimination. Feel free to reach out to me personally, as I will speak to each and every one of you if you need to. I don't need to make things public here. I ask you again, make sure you do your research on BLM. Let's talk about the complainant. I'm asking you to do the research on the complainant. There's an agenda and it's all over Facebook. The day Dwayne was suspended, he read me his letter. Before he was suspended, he had an apology letter. I, I'm not sure why this was not released, but because of it, this chaos came into our city. And I'll go ahead and I'll end and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Donna.
My name's Ben Miller. And I just wanted to come and express some thoughts tonight. I actually, when I came over, I didn't really know what I was expecting. But I did want to be here in behalf of Dwayne Sheldon. He is a friend of mine and I, I know that that guy has a heart of gold. I moved up here to Alaska roughly eight years ago. And...